Before we get to our candidates, we're going to be having our presentation for the point of sale ordinance and the ballot proposal. Unfortunately, the person that was going to be representing the city of Adrian tonight had a death in the family and was not able to be able to come to make the presentation tonight. And so our thoughts and prayers are with that person and their family in this very troubling time for them as they had the passing of that family member. So with that, we'll continue to move forward and have Carrie Smith, who is going to be doing a presentation on the support of a ballot proposal to repeal the point of sale ordinance. And let's welcome Carrie Smith.
Thank you, Dale. Good evening, everyone. Thank you again to the Lettaway NAACP and the Dominican Sisters for creating space for this conversation and to share information to our voters. My name is Carrie Smith. I'm a City of Adrian resident, voter, and homeowner. I work for a local title insurance company and I represent the Adrian community for the repeal of the point of sale ordinance. As part of my job, I work with lenders, realtors, buyers, and sellers every single day on property transfers within our community. Because of my work, I've had a front row seat to the reality of the point of sale ordinance in action and the impact it's had on our local housing market and buyers and sellers. So I want to start with a story that was actually shared by a seller at our community meeting that we had October 6th at the Adrian District Library. I won't be able to read the entire letter, but I do have a copy of it if you'd like it afterwards. So I want to tell you about Jennifer Pearson's story. Jennifer grew up right here in Adrian. Her dad bought their family home on Howell Avenue back in the 1970s, a little two-bedroom house that he later expanded into a three-bedroom home. It was tiny and it needed work, but it was his, and it was filled with memories. In March of 2024, Jennifer's father was tragically killed in a motorcycle accident. So suddenly Jennifer and her sister found themselves tasked with handling the sale of their childhood home. That's when they learned about the Adrian's point of sale ordinance and what it required before a home could be sold. When the inspection report came back from the city, Jennifer was shocked. This ordinance that's being presented as simple repairs demanded a new roof on both the house and garage, new gutters, siding or paint on a decades-old barn, foundation repairs, new front steps, and even removal of a carport. Tens of thousands of dollars in required repairs just to be allowed to sell a home that they didn't even live in. She was grieving her father, cleaning out the home she grew up in, and now facing the possibility that they couldn't sell it at all. She said there were nights she couldn't sleep, thinking they might have to let the house sit vacant because her and her sister didn't have the money to make the required repairs. In the end, they were lucky because cash investors stepped in, willing to take on the repairs, but it could have easily gone a different way. So Jennifer's story shows exactly who this ordinance hurts. Everyday people going through life's hardest moments, families dealing with loss, financial struggle, or change. No one should be forced to take on massive repair bills just to move forward. That's not protecting our neighborhoods, that's punishing our neighbors. Jennifer's story is just one of many that we have heard since this ordinance went into effect on November 30th of last year, passing by a four-three vote at the city commission level. People in support of this ordinance have told us it would reduce crime, slumlords, and drug houses. You may have received a flyer or ten. But the truth, it doesn't touch any of these problems. It just burdens everyday homeowners. Jennifer's dad's home, not a drug house. Jennifer's dad, not a slumlord. Crime statistics from that neighborhood, have they been able to show that it went down because the house sold? We haven't given anything supporting that. And the buyers of that property, cash investors who are planning on doing those repairs anyways, not because of the point of sale ordinance. Supporters of this ordinance have spent lots of money and sent out many flyers with inflammatory claims and statistics meant to scare residents into voting no. So I do want to talk about some of the claims. Again, crime, nobody wants crime. There's no data shows one police report or statistic where point of sale reduced crime. It doesn't exist. And in fact, at the city commission meeting held on September 15th, when the point of sale presentation was given by the enforcement officer, they admitted that they have not been able to enforce the ordinance. We had one resident reach out to us who told us her repairs had to be completed by May 30th and still hasn't had anyone reach out to follow up and make sure those repairs were completed. So I ask you this, how can an ordinance that is by the city's own admission not being enforced contribute to a decrease in crime? It can't, and we're smarter than that. Slumlords, slumlords don't sell, they rent, they own rental properties. Point of sale doesn't touch them. There is already a rental inspection program which covers rental properties. Additionally, the certificate for point of sale is required every time a property sells on a residential property. But for rentals, landlords can sell to other landlords as many times as they want in the three years that the rental certificate is good. How is the city tracking and enforcing these properties? How can they ensure they're even being registered as rentals? That's the real slumlord shell game that's going on. And I would like to take a quick aside to say, not every landlord is a slumlord. There are many responsible and caring landlords that provide quality homes for their tenants, so to lump them all in one category is not fair. Drug houses, drug houses are a problem. Drug houses are a law enforcement issue, not a home inspection issue. Additionally, high crime and nuisance areas such as vacant properties are already covered by a vacant property ordinance. So what the point of sale really does? It forces costly inspections and repairs on buyers and sellers. Currently, they're not charging fees for the ordinance until the vote goes through, but as the ordinance is written, there are three fees in this ordinance. There's an application fee, an inspection fee, and a re-inspection fee. The city's presentation on September 15th showed that 18 out of 141 houses passed inspection with no issues. So if we do that math, it's an 87.23% failure rate, and sellers would have to pay all three of those fees, plus the cost of the repairs. The other thing point of sale really does allows enforcement officers to ticket neighboring yards. It was admitted in the same presentation that they're using their access to backyards to ticket neighboring yards that they can't see from the street, which is a huge overreach, and I'm sure not how the ordinance was originally intended. Could interior inspections be another thing that would develop down the road? Supporters of this ordinance hold up the city of Wyandotte as the example of this working for residents. Their inspections are interior and exterior, so I don't believe this is outside of the realm of possibility. And also in this city where it's working, their median income in 2023 was $25,000 higher than City of Adrian's. The point of sale disproportionately harms seniors, lower-income families, and first-time homebuyers. The ordinance mandates that if a seller is unable or unwilling to make a repair, then the buyer will need to either put down a cash deposit or escrow funds the amount of the cost of repairs needed. That's not happening right now, so we still don't have a true idea of how this is working because they're not requiring the repair to the escrows yet. Most loan programs that a buyer would use do not allow for escrows to be held by buyer or seller for repairs, and most loan programs already address safety issues as part of their inspection and appraisal process. But the point of sale goes beyond the minimum property standards common in VHA, FHA loans, and adds additional criteria, which translates into more barriers to homeownership. So what's the alternative? We can start with the ordinances that we already have on the books. We have a blight ordinance. If your neighbor has blight, call the city and report it. Why should you have to wait for that person to list their house and sell for it to be addressed? We have a vacant building ordinance that, when enforced, helps prevent nuisance properties. We have a rental certification program that, when enforced, holds slumlords accountable to maintaining property standards on the homes that they own. And I want to make something abundantly clear. Those who support the repeal of the point of sale are not pro-blight. We too want clean, safe neighborhoods. We appreciate that there is a blight committee for our city, and we believe their hearts are in the right place. However, the point of sale does not take into consideration the human factors that need to be addressed when you are having conversations about blight and the advancement of our cities. When factors such as lack of businesses creating employment opportunities, addiction, mental health, and resources and support for those who are experiencing financial and physical hardship are not part of the conversation, the solution will always be another ordinance. The home is the biggest asset most families ever own. The government, especially local government, should not put roadblocks in the way when people try to sell. Over 2,000 city residents signed a petition to get this onto the ballot for every resident to have a voice on November 4th. We want to protect property rights, and we want to protect homeowners and keep housing fair and affordable for all. If this ordinance does not get repealed, it's not the slumlords that will lose, it's everyday people like you and me. So vote yes to repeal.
This is part of the ballot proposal to repeal the point of sale ordinance. And again, the person who was going to be making the presentation for the city unable to make it due to a death in the family. All right, at this point, we're going to be asking our candidates to be coming to the front table. We're going to take a quick break for that to happen, and we'll come right back just to let our audience know that we're going to take just a very short break and bring our candidates on for the City of Adrian City Commission. All right, we're back, and welcome back to more of the candidate forum here, Adrian City Commission candidates. And we have our candidates here at the table. I'd like to welcome, in order, and we're going into alphabetical order, Erin Chesser, I'm sorry, Erin. Doug Miller. Once again, just to remind you that each candidate will have a minute to respond to each question. Each candidate will have the opportunity to get the question asked to them first as we go along with the questioning, okay? So candidates, ready? Okay, here we go. So the first question is going to start with Erin. Erin, in what ways have you prepared yourself to be in effective Adrian City Commission there if elected?
I have been involved in the city for the past three years, going to every commission meeting. I think I've missed about five. Making sure that I hit the big city meetings, like the budget meetings, the, all the candidate forums, all the planning meetings I can get to, and then taking things like the Citizens Academy, being involved in as many community projects as possible, and Pride, and nonprofit groups like Lead Adrian, a Latino advocacy group, to make sure that I can be a representative or an advocate for any population that Adrian has to serve.
All right. Gordon, same question for you.
You would think after six years on the commission, I'd know everything there is to know, and I'm going to guarantee you that I don't. I was first appointed to the planning commission in 2017 and started attending all the city commission meetings. And by the time I got elected in 2021, or I'm sorry, 2019, I was sure I knew everything. I found out very quickly at the first meeting, I didn't know hardly anything. So that's the first thing I'd say. But kind of a hokey kind of thing to say, my mother told me, you need to learn something new every single day, and I still do that to this day. I would tell the other candidates that the biggest thing they need to learn to do is toughen up because every time you take a vote, you're going to make people happy and you're going to make people unhappy. And the next time you take a vote, sides will flip. So I've learned a lot, I continue to learn every day, and I look forward to continuing to serve.
All right, same question for you, Doug.
I was fortunate enough to... I was fortunate enough to be elected, elected into this position four years ago, almost four years ago. I have enjoyed serving. I've served on various different committees and sat in on other ones. Again, this is different than anything I've ever done before, but very, very exciting. It's hard work, and I enjoy it, and that's why I'm hoping to be re-elected. I think part of it is that, without stealing too much from Gordon, you're surprised at how much you don't know, and how much you need to understand, and how much you need to work through to try to possibly, you know, do the best you possibly do at this job and serve as many people as we can. Thank you so much.
Okay, Chip Mar, the same question for you.
I've been a business owner in downtown Adrian since 1993. And I own three buildings downtown. I've had issues with building inspectors, some goods and not some good. I've been a member of the Downtown Development Authority. I've been president of Adrianian Rotary Club. I still sit on the board as the Adrian Symphony Orchestra. And I believe my experience in the business world, since there's no one in the city council right now that owns a business, is, I think I give a different diversity of the council.
All right, Tiffany, for you.
Well, thank you all for coming out tonight. It's a little nerve-wracking being up here, but I have a background in environmental policy. I got my undergraduate degree from the University of Michigan, where I focused in oceanography and environmental policy. And then I got my master's from Columbia, which was specifically on environmental policy. So I am not unfamiliar with the world of policy. For the last eight years, I've been running and operating my own business in downtown Adrian. I have worked with many different people, I've had to manage many different types of employees. If you've ever had to manage people, you know how that goes. So I have a lot of experience dealing with people, and I also have excellent listening skills. And I feel like that's an important quality to have as a commissioner. You're not up here to make decisions for yourself, you're here to listen to what your community wants and needs. And I feel that I have excellent skills to do so.
All right, thank you. And again, everybody, don't be afraid of the microphone, get right, that microphone right there. James Traul.
I don't know what I have to bring to that, to the question right now.
James, bring that microphone.
The whole thing is, is I started one of the meetings because I got tired of stuff. I got tired of being, coming home, you have to notice on your door about something's changing that you know nothing about. I think we need to change some stuff in the commission, and the only way to do that is to see what some people have and work towards, you know, everybody, not just certain people. I've been to every meeting for two, almost three years. I've gone to the planning commission, I've gone to the ZBA. I try to make some of the community events, I can only do it because like most people I know, we work. And some of the meetings that I listen to while I'm at work is, you know, that's why I'm at work. And we need to just change things up.
All right, very good, we'll go to our next question. Next question, we'll start with Gordon, Gauss on this one. Gordon, how would you improve communication between commission members and residents about the activities the commission is engaging in? Specifically, upcoming commission issues, deliberations, and decisions that they are made?
So...
Get that microphone right up there.
I think that in the past, the city has not been as transparent as we need to be. I think that's improved a lot over the last two or three years. An excellent example of that was we recently hired our new city administrator. We had a very frank discussion and debate amongst the other candidates, which I think most people were surprised at the selection that we made, but we did it openly and transparently, and in the end, I think we made the right decision. We could always do a better job, I think better use of social media. Obviously, the press is, media, regular media is there, almost every day. We need to communicate more. I go out in the community, talk to the residents individually and as groups, and I think that's the best way to communicate what's going on in the city and by the city commission.
Same question for Doug Miller.
I think it's important for all of us to reassure everyone that they should come. They're welcome to come to the meetings and listen online and see what's happening. We are, in the last three or four years that I've been serving, the numbers have increased. I'm thrilled by the people that attend. I'm also encouraged by the people who come to me privately, before the meeting, after the meeting, call me, email me, talk to me about problems and concerns that they have, but also good things. We're getting a lot of good feedback from a lot of people that really feel that there's been a change, turnaround. I'm very, very proud of what we're doing, but there's lots to do yet. There's lots to do, we need to work much harder as a commission, but also as a community to continue to move things along and make sure that we help everyone as much as we can. Thank you.
Same question for Chip Mar.
Being a business owner, I have to deal with clients every single day, win and lose clients. And the city council meetings I've gone to is that I think we have a very awkward process where this taxpayers that go up there cannot directly ask the mayor, the city council people, city manager, direct questions and get direct answers back. They've got to wait, they've got to speak before the meeting or after the meeting, and I think that's a silly way to run the city council meeting.
All right, Tiffany, Silo Zike.
Can you restate the question just because I feel like some of that has gotten complicated?
Okay, very good. How would you improve communication between commission members and residents about the activities the commission is engaging in? Specifically, upcoming commission issues, deliberations, and decisions after they are made?
Okay, that's great. So communication, that's key, right? You can't have any conversation with anyone without communicating with them, that's point blank. I think, you know, the commission is kind of simple. How do you communicate with half the people in your life, or probably 90% of them? Probably through your phone. It is easy to access social media, it is easy to update people with live updates, with what the commission is doing, what is being said, what has been accomplished, and that helps keep everyone accountable. I think that we definitely need to have more communication between commissioners. I heard rumblings, I won't say what way, but it needs to be focused on that the commissioners can get along and speak to one another to solve these issues that our community faces. So, you know, putting your ego aside and speaking to one another is so vitally important in a leadership position like this.
And James Traul.
Well, first of all, as somebody that has not had emails answered by commissioners or even acknowledged that they've received it. I think Tiffany's right, social media gets everything out. You know, we need to step out of the 1920s, step into 2025. Use our phones, use your computers. I was going to go to the ZBA meeting this past, uh, past week, and when I looked at the calendar, all of a sudden it disappeared, that it wasn't there, it was canceled. So I walked to meetings. So I walked five blocks down there, what am I going to do if they're not there? There's no warning, it just, the calendar changed like that. I set my calendar up every week or every month I wanted to do it. And if the city's calendar changes and there's no notification, how are we going to know? That's why nobody shows up for these meetings, because they get there and the doors are locked.
All right, very good. Our next question, and we'll be starting off.
Oh, I'm sorry, Erin, I'm sorry. So communication is such a huge thing. And when I started my campaign, I made a resident survey to try to see how much different input that I could get from as many residents as possible. A lot of them said that they do actually follow the social media in town, but because of the algorithms on Facebook, they still don't understand why they're not seeing all of the updates. So social media absolutely is a great tool, but it shouldn't be the only tool. Striving to answer the emails and also having, sorry, utilizing the Lettaway Voice and utilizing our electronic banners should be something that we start doing. You could have the meetings whenever they are on the banners, you could have the events coming up by the city. Anything that happens downtown, what's happening downtown is also the things happening in chambers, and we should start utilizing that. Not only that, we should have Neighborhood Town Halls to bring City Hall to you. Very specifically Crimson Holding, that, that, that meeting had a huge turnout because we actually went to the neighborhoods.
All right, I give my apologies, Erin. All right, our next question is going to be starting off with Doug Miller. In your opinion, should the city be involved in supportive organizations that provide programs and shelter for the homeless and unhoused in the city?
Absolutely. I think that's part of the piece of what we do. We're here to help as many people as possible. I don't think that we're always trying to be equal with everyone. That's a very general beginning, that's just the beginning. We need to find out what each person needs specifically. What do they need for success? We can start by helping as many people as, as all the people as we can help. But eventually, we need to make sure that we are doing specific things for helping each individual or group of people for success. That's one of the biggest things that we need to do.
Chip Mar, same question. Sure. In your opinion, should the city be involved in the support of organizations that provide programs and shelter for the homeless and unhoused in the city?
Well, I think the city should work with the, not pro-life organizations, but they lead the way because I think the church is a way to help these people. I think that the city cannot be all things to all people. I'm one of the, because there's so many needs, where do you stop? Once you open that, that tube, where do you stop? I think you've got to make tough choices, and there's other organizations that can deal with those issues in a far better way than the City of Adrian.
Okay, Tiffany, Silo Zike. Same question for you, Tiffany.
I absolutely think that the city should be involved in helping with services to help the unhoused. I don't think that it's solely the city's responsibility to take care of this issue. It's a highly complex issue. There's so many facets that contribute to homelessness, and we need organizations like the Housing Authority and Lettaway Community Mental Health Authority. We need smaller addiction services, we need drop training, organized meetings, you know, things that get to some of the underlying factors that contribute to homelessness. So I do think that it's important that the city's involved in that. I don't think that it is solely the city's responsibility to work on that issue. It's going to take collaboration from a lot of different organizations in this community.
James Traul, same question for you.
I think we all need to work together to help out the homeless and in the addicts and everything, not just the city themselves, us as a community. Do I believe that they should be involved in helping, yes, they have a little bit, well, they have more insight, they have more, more ways of finding out more grants that everybody needs to help, that, you know, us ourselves can't do it, but yet if you know somebody that can help. There's different programs that are out there that a lot of people don't realize and they don't utilize, and that's one of the problems, is that we need to utilize those. And if a city council member knows what these are, then maybe they should, you know, put it out to the public, let other people know, let these organizations know who they can contact or who they can talk to that will help them out.
Okay, Erin Chesser.
Yes, I absolutely believe that the city should take a leading role in helping one of the most vulnerable populations that our city has. I think it's a duty of the city officials to, to do just that specifically. Right now, share the warmth needs, a big donation to them, or they won't be able to continue to operate. That would put about 60 people who live in the city out on the streets, and it is about to be winter. A really easy way that the city could think about organizing that would be to have the Human Relations Commission be put back where it should be and help with those residents who literally have nothing. If we don't help with that, I don't really know why we're sitting up here as candidates or elected candidates. If we don't help with that, I don't really know why we're sitting up here as candidates or elected officials.
Same question for Gordon Gallas.
Pardon it to what Tiffany said, homelessness is a complex issue. It arises from housing costs, limited affordability of rentals, to mental health challenges, addiction, and job loss. In a small city like we have here in Adrian, we can't solve it alone. We can make progress by working together, however. That means partnering, partnering, partnering with Lettuce County Agencies, local nonprofits, and faith-based groups that can provide housing and support services. As a city commissioner, I focus on ensuring zoning and redevelopment policies and encourage affordable housing and on connecting people with the help that they need rather than pushing the problem out of sight. Compassion and coordination is the key.
All right, thank you. Our next question, we're gonna start off with Chip Moore. Chip, in your opinion, what are the two biggest challenges that the city of Adrian is currently facing, and how do you propose to address them?
Two issues.
Yes.
As I talk to my clients.
Get that microphone right up to you.
One of the first issues I get when I'm campaigning in the city of Adrian is our educational system, where I know this is not a city, um, function right now, but when you have seventy percent of the people in our country can't read, sixty-five can't do math skills, we wanna have companies that can hire people. We have to look at our school system to figure out what are we doing the best for the future taxpayers of this city. And I'm not criticizing Nate Parker. I think he's doing a great job with the situation, but COVID has really put us a big dent in our educational system. The other, um, issue facing Adrian, I think, um, well, right now, it's the blight issue. Everybody's talking about what we're gonna do with the blight. So, um, it's gonna be, um, as we deal with that situation, I think that everybody wants to get rid of blight.
All right, Tiffany.
Um, so I mean, we could probably sit here all day and come up with issues, whether they're real or not. Um, and I think two that come to my mind are making Adrian an attractive and safe place for families and young people to set up and some place that they can see themselves having a future. I think that's vitally important to reestablishing Adrian as the place to be, you know, because there are a lot of people doing a lot of hard work and trying to make that happen. Um, and I think we're on the right path. I think we just need, you know, some more manpower. Um, the second issue that I think, um, is, you know, probably most important to me is transparency between government and community. It's, it, as a commissioner, I think that's the duty of the job, you know, is to make sure that you're bridging that gap between the city and your community. You wanna make sure that you are informing the people of what is going on. You wanna make sure that you are not, you know, doing some backdoor deals or trying to hide anything. It should not be misleading the way that you're presenting information. Um, it is your job as a commissioner to be transparent.
Same question for James Traul.
All the two things. Well, one thing's business. We have businesses that refuse to come to the city because they're, they've been railroaded. Uh, I've said it plenty of commission meetings where they, these people have been told that, no, they're not gonna, they, well, there's snowballs against and whatever of getting the zoning changed so that they can operate their business, but yet somebody else can go down and play around, and they're gonna get their business. So we need to work on that right there. We're working on getting business here. I know contractors that refuse to come into the city of Adrian and work on stuff. That's, you know, that's businesses that are refusing to come here to do work because our city is difficult to deal with. Businesses are, are saying it's difficult to deal with. Uh, the other thing is blight. Everybody talks about the point of sale and the blight. Well, I'm surrounded by rentals. I really wish it, it's out in the open. Who is gonna come to inspect the rentals next to my house? Because the blight is there, has not been addressed.
All right, Aaron Cheshire.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. In your opinion, what are the two biggest challenges that the city of Adrian is currently facing, and how do you propose to address them?
Um, sure. One of the biggest, um, challenges that I think that the city is facing is, has already been kind of touched on, is bringing, um, bringing young people and their families to Adrian to live, work, and, um, we, um, I have struggled to find a job here. I, I am employed by the Adrian Community Preschool, but it's hard to find work here that has any substantial growth. And if you don't have jobs for young people that have substantial growth opportunities, you're not going to actually have them stay here. The next is providing a place for everybody to be, including people who are absolutely being targeted for their skin color or what language they're speaking. Uh, the ICE rates have been ridiculous and they're really ramping up. There's been eighteen people taken from Adrian, four has been returned. They've all had their papers. And the city, only one commissioner wrote something for it, and I think that that really needs to be addressed and support all people that are here.
Same question for Gordon Gallas.
A lot of our problems or things that need to be solved come down to budget. You know, the reality of local government is we always have more needs than others. Key for me is to prioritize responsibly and make every dollar count. My background is in finance and accounting, and for decades of business leadership, it taught me to balance budgets and set clear priorities, measuring results in a board of ways. In addition, in Adrian, that means maintaining safe streets, strong neighborhoods, and essential services first. Beyond that, we need to look for grants, partnerships, and spark redevelopment that brings new revenues without raising taxes unnecessarily. It's about discipline and creativity, spending wisely to keep Adrian strong tomorrow. And that, and my friends, will help bring more people to our city. The better it is, the more attractive it'll be to young families, um, with their children.
Doug Miller?
As mentioned before, we wanna make Adrian as attractive as possible for young people to come here and live. We also wanna keep the people that are here and let those people continue to be proud of the city that they have. And what we can do to continue to make that work for everyone that's here. Businesses are always welcome. We want businesses to come. We want the, the, the community to flourish. That will help. Uh, we also struggle, uh, budgetarily sometimes, as I, as Gordon mentioned, that we are limited somehow by, as a city group, to be able to, uh, finance those people to come here and, yeah, be a part of our business. We are fighting with blight, but it's not just people's homes. It's commercial blight that I'm concerned about too. I think that's a big concern for me. As companies leave, they just do not take care of their properties, and we're stuck with that. And that's a concern of mine. It's always been a concern, and I continue to work on that. I continue to compete. Thanks.
All right, we go to our next question. We'll be starting this one off with Tiffany. Tiffany, do you believe the city point of sale ordinance should be repealed? If the point of sale ordinance remains in place, would you support expanding it to include interior inspections?
Um, well, I think first and foremost, I would encourage everyone to use their voice and make sure that they go vote regardless of what side of the, uh, the agenda you're on. I think it's important that you use your voice and, you know, exercise democracy. That's what makes our country great. Um, I think we, most importantly, need to work with our communities to figure out what we can afford. Um, I think we need to enforce some policies that we already have and make those work for our community. Um, as Carrie mentioned, you know, there is rental inspection, uh, programs. There are, is a blight ordinance. Um, I think everyone in this room wants Adrian to thrive. We want beautiful streets. We want to make sure that people can go outside and feel comfortable. Um, I just think that we need to find alternative ways to improve our community rather than forcing something that they've been so vocal about not wanting on them.
James Traul.
Yes, we need to repeal the point of sale. I bought my house on a land contract. I guarantee that when I bought that house thirteen years ago, they wouldn't pass point of sale. I've taken the time, I've fixed it up. It's a home. Would I support if it went further? I can't say whether I would or not, because to be honest, you know, like Tiffany just stated, we have ordinances in place. This should not have went through. It's gonna start with the exterior, it's gonna end up the interior. And then for anybody that's been to Detroit, anybody that's been to Ann Arbor, Jackson, my brother had six houses next to him two years ago when I went there. I was there not too long ago. He is the only house on that block in Jackson. That's how they take care of blight. They run you out. If you can't afford it, they're just gonna tax for clothes on you and run you out. And we now talk about blight too. I got a house right next to Comstock Park. I know that certain people pass by it every day. Why it's not been done since that sale? That was almost three years ago.
Okay, Aaron Cheshire, same question, please.
Um, I absolutely am in favor of repealing the point of sale ordinance. Um, I have been from the beginning. I actually, uh, petitioned to get it repealed. Um, I think it's very flawed. Uh, there are too many questions that aren't answered, like how much is it going to be? Like the inspections, how much are they going to charge the residents once it's actually in, if it does stay? Because that number keeps changing every time I look it up, um, across the country. So, uh, I think that also if we have an ordinance that we are putting through that every question should be answered to the best of our ability, and again, those neighborhood town halls with, um, with the people who are for and against it should have been happening within the city before this was ever even a question. Uh, second part of that, no, I would not support an interior continuation on it. The only thing I would, um, support with it is to revise it and make it, um, something that could work for everybody if it does stay.
All right, Gordon Gallas, same question.
I don't think it's any secret that I've been a supporter of the blight sale. I still am, but I'll guarantee you that as long as I'm on commission, we will never do interior inspections. That is not what this is about. This is about beautification and making the city, the city more attractive to visitors and others. Um, I think the presentation Miss Smith made was a little bit dramatic because the example that was used is by far not the usual thing. We're usually talking about peeling paint, broken gutters, and, um, porches that are unsafe. Uh, the goal is not to penalize people. The goal is to prevent blight from spreading and protect everyone's investment. Most repairs are minor. They can be resolved quickly, and I think we've seen that. The main, the ordinance maintains curb appeal and property values, and that benefits both current residents and buyers coming new, new to the city.
Okay, same question for Doug Miller.
I also voted for this ordinance to go through. I feel that it helps the neighborhoods because people are interested in having blight handled. We wanna catch it when it's being sold so that it can be fixed. We wanna make the neighborhoods as nice as they can possibly be. I think that there's been a lot of information that's been passed along that, um, I think is, uh, not our intent. Uh, I also am not interested in inter, uh, interior inspections. I have apartments at my home, and I have inspections every three years. I'm very, very proud of how the city handles the rental properties, uh, in Adrian because they are very thorough with their inspections. And I think that if we have a person that does a five-minute, ten-minute walk around a house and finds the things that are bleak, porches that are broken, uh, windows that are broken, uh, paint job, things that will help the house look better and sell better and improve the neighborhood, that's what I'm looking for. And I would love to see improvements in this ordinance. I'm not sure what the costs are gonna be, uh, but we will talk about it as a commission and with the people that are here in the city.
All right, and same question for Chip Moore, please.
Thank you. Again, as a owner of an insurance business, I know when I write policies, um, throughout the country, uh, insurance companies and the banks were doing inspection of the house already. And they're not gonna insure the house if there's problems with it. So to me, it's kind of redundant, uh, what this, um, ordinance is doing. But, um, and I also wanna take my hat off to the people that did, um, organize this campaign to repeal it because we live in a republic. I mean, if you were in a communist country, socialist, they wouldn't be doing it. So I live, I'm glad we live in the United States of America.
Okay. Our next question, we'll be starting off with James Traul. James? What impact, positive or negative, do you believe the point of sale ordinance has had on our community since its implementation?
Well, somebody that I have, any family member that went through it, uh, will say probably about twenty thousand dollars under property when they sold it because the first offer they had was denied because of the point of sale. The person didn't understand what the point of sale was when they did it. Uh, Realtor had told this family member to reduce the price of their house so they can try to get it sold faster, so they can get something bigger, something better. The city of Adrian actually lost a resident in this process because when they finally did sell their house, the place they got was outside of city limits. Peeling paint, stuff like that, you're talking about cleaning up. It's called lipstick on dick, polishing a turd. Just saying, you polish a turd, but it's still a turd, it still stings. That's what, and that's what a lot of these slumlorders and a lot of these people are doing, is they're throwing a quick paint job on, they'll cover up paint on a foundation, put paint on a foundation, covers up a crack, you won't even know it, it'll still sting. The problem is we need to get it taken care of ahead of time.
Same question for Aaron Cheshire.
Can you please repeat the question?
Sure. What impact, positive or negative, do you believe the point of sale ordinance has had on our community since its implementation?
Um, I think that, eh, the things that I have seen have always been negative. Um, there's a lot of confusion about it. Uh, I have a peer of mine who is, um, almost twenty. He lost his grandma and he was living with her only. And, uh, one day she just wasn't there anymore, it was her house. And then all of the sudden, we had this point of sale ordinance that he had to navigate all by himself. Um, he was confused. He didn't know why we needed something else besides the, uh, blight ordinances we already had. And, uh, it was hard for him to get in contact with anybody to actually do the inspections. And if he didn't have a aunt that was already, um, that is a Realtor specifically, he wouldn't have been able to navigate this. It left him, um, absolutely shattered with grief and, uh, while having to, um, sell this house that he couldn't afford to live in. Um, again, I think that the, uh, blight ordinances that we already have in place are all we need. Um, so I haven't seen anything very positive come out of it. Thanks.
Same question for Gordon Gallas.
You might find this surprising, but I think there are some negatives. Um, one, one of the things that I see a problem with it, it discourages people from buying fixer-uppers. You know, I was always told that if you wanna make an investment in a home, you buy the worst piece of property in the best neighborhood and you fix it up. And that is an issue with the point of sale. I think we can do better things to, to refine the point of sale ordinance. Like I said, we're neck, I would never approve interior, uh, but I think that, uh, there's, it's not perfect. And, uh, also to the point that Chip made about home inspections or anything else, I think one of the things that hasn't been talked about is the fact that registered home inspectors can register with the city and we will accept those inspections and who, uh, the city inspector is going out to do that.
Same question for Doug Miller.
I have to go, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm, that's an important part and piece of all this. If we have a licensed inspector come through, many of the banks and loaning, uh, groups want an inspection. If that inspection is done, uh, it's registered with the city, and we have nothing to do with, uh, point of sale. Um, if we have all the answers, I'd be very, very surprised if the city commissioners would ever have all the answers. We are very concerned about making this work the best it can do for the city of Adrian, for the, the residents here in Adrian. I don't have all the answers, and I surely don't know whether it's going to work out. I'm very excited about us going to vote, and I, I want people to vote their, their, uh, their feelings and their conscience, and, uh, and let's move on from there. There's other things we need to do to help the city. Uh, this is just one part and piece. Uh, I, it's very unfortunate that, uh, we did not have our presentation on the city, just so we were able to have, uh, both sides of the information.
Same question for Chip Moore.
When you look at the situation, the ordinance that was passed was a positive, negative. It really boils down to, uh, the city managed, city minister running the city. Uh, was he set goals to do what they need to do with the rental inspection company, uh, inspections? Because, um, I have a, um, from two thousand eleven- Because I have a, from 2011, when I was in the DDA, City Administrator Dane Nelson would give a fact sheet to the people in the city and the city commissioner. And I know Dick Darno did 14, over 1,400 inspections that year. And I'm not sure how many inspections or Greg Elliott gave to his city council, to the mayor of any, what were the personnel, what were they doing during that timeframe? So it's a matter of leadership. You set out goals and you make sure the city manager is fulfilling the goals of the city council.
All right, and Tiffany Silo Zai.
So as far as impact goes with point of sale ordinance, I would have to say I've seen mostly negative things. To kind of piggyback off of what Mr. Gaus said, my husband and I bought a house in the city of Adrian Limits in April of 2024. And had this ordinance been kind of enforced, I'm not sure that we would have bought it. We went without inspection, just because I have a handy spouse. But I'm not sure if it needed all the rehab at the point of sale that we would have gone through with it. And I don't think I'd be sitting here with you right now. But instead, we have a lovely, beautifully historic home now that we're restoring slowly. And it does prevent people from buying fixer-uppers. I also think an impact, though, that's most important, is it's created a lack of trust in our local government and our local leaders. When you're representing people, you need to actually represent them. And it needs to be a well-thought-out plan before you force something on your constituents.
My next question, we're gonna start off with Aaron Cheshire. Aaron, the current law referred to as Section 287G states that ICE can delegate to local law enforcement officers the authority to perform specified ICE functions under their direction. Do you think either a police department should enter into a 287G agreement with a memorandum of understanding for cooperation with immigration and customs enforcement?
Absolutely not. There is no reason for that. Again, there have been 18 people taken from Adrian specifically. All of them have had their papers. They have all been profiled, absolutely, because of the skin color or the language they're speaking. I have had a hand in bringing at least three of those people back to the city. Having local law enforcement act as ICE agents, acting as federal agents, is a ridiculous notion that anyone, we should not, we should not do that. The only thing that I think that we should do is when ICE is in the area, I think that APD could be alerted so we could have body cams on the ICE agents, letting them see that they're being filmed. And when the resident who is trying to give their papers to show the ICE officers that they are allowed to be here, they would then have a record of those people trying to give their papers. For as an example, there was a young man who was taken while he was trying to give the papers, but the ICE agents wouldn't let him and threw his documentation all over his car.
Same question for Gordon Gaus.
There is no way that I would want the APD to be parred with ICE in terms of picking up people out of the street. Now, our police chief, when confronted in the city chambers by the Hope and Action Group, he was able to respond to say that we will not support or we will not assist ICE. What we will do, though, is not interfere. If they identify themselves, we have to let them go on. As Chief Emmerich said, to interfere, we'll get our police officers actually arrested. Can't do that. But in terms of authorizing the city police to assist ICE in their doing their job, I would never support that.
Same question for Doug Miller.
I absolutely, absolutely would not support any of our law enforcement in Lenoir County to assist ICE in any way at all. I think most, if not all, of the scenarios have been absolutely atrocious. I've been appalled by how our citizens have been treated by ICE. I don't want our police people, Lenoir County sheriffs, to be involved at all in this. I think it's imperative that we do not show any support for this. It's uncomfortable to think that we are supposed to have our law enforcer people assist them. But as the chief of police did mention, their career is in jeopardy if they step in. Policemen here in Adrian, if they step in, their careers could possibly be in jeopardy. And I just, I just don't like any part or piece of how this process is going. And I'm so happy that our police do not assist them in any way.
Same question for Chip Moore.
I would leave that up to the police chief because he knows law enforcement better than I do, what they can do. But I can tell you this from a different angle. I am, being in the insurance business, I've had three clients be hit by uninsured illegal immigrants in Lenoir County. So you know if it's happening in Lenoir County, and you know it's happening all around the country. And how much does that cost me to the insurance companies because they're driving cars without insurance and doing damage to other people?
Same question for Tiffany Silo Zai.
What a generalization. I do not support ADP being involved with ICE whatsoever. I don't support ICE in general, but I definitely don't think that they should be involved on a local level. I'm glad that ADP has been clear about the boundaries that they're willing to make. It's been a racist policy and a rounding up of our Hispanic citizens. And I don't know if you've taken a look around Adrian, but Hispanic people make up a huge majority of our community, and that's fantastic. And I don't think that we should be supporting racist, you know, policies or, you know, whatever. I just, I can't fathom that.
James Trow.
No, I don't think they should be involved with it. I think the APD should stand as silent they are. I agree with the body cams of watching. What most people don't understand is federal supersede state. So like Gaus said, if they step in, they go to jail just as quick as everybody else. And if you think it's her to get an undocumented man or whatever out, imagine trying to get an officer out alive. Because if he gets in there, they're gonna use him as bait, they're gonna take him out.
All right, we go to our next question. We'll be starting with Gordon Gaus with this. Gordon, what should the city commission be doing to assure that the children and families of Adrian have a quality outdoor pool facility to utilize?
I've been waiting for this one. So the issue with regard to the pool, the Bone Pool has been here for generations. I'm sorry, generations. I grew up at the Bone Pool. I think most everybody in this room has been a resident for Adrian, has been at the Bone Pool or has participated. But over the 60 years, you can't blame the current commission for it, but for years and years and years, maintenance has been deferred. And right now, we're in a position where we're putting in good money after bad. We have to take the temperature of the community. What do they really want in a pool? Do they want a full-size pool? They want a community pool? Do they want a lap pool? Do they not want any pool? But what are we willing to pay for? It's going to be expensive. And it's a question of how are people willing to pay for it? They don't, nobody ever wants a tax increase or would willing to combine a Met Millage with private-public partnerships to raise the money to do that. That's a question we all have to ask ourselves.
All right, same question, Doug Miller.
I think it's important for all of us to remember what it was like when we were young to go to the pool. Community pool was a major part and piece of my community when I was growing up. It's not playing that kind of important part to many of the children today. But I still believe that we need that kind of facility for our children. It may not be a city pool. It may be other pools that are in the community that could be an option for our children to be a part of. I'm struggling with it. The financial burden is huge. We are talking billions to be able to move to another pool. Tear out and get another pool. It's just, it's very, very expensive. I'm very concerned. I can't wait for us to continue to talk with our citizens and really have a down-to-earth discussion about this. What can we do? What are our alternatives? We need to find that answer for our community, I think is an important part.
Chip Moore, same question, please.
You're looking at a quality of life issue. I grew up in Hillsdale, and you learn to, you learn how to swim in a pool. And so we want to teach our children lifesaving skills, how to swim. I mean, so I think it's, those are questions, how big a pool do we want? And I think maybe this is something we put on the ballot for the voters to vote, is they give them options of the pool and see where we go from here.
All right, same question for Tiffany Silo Zai.
I think we can all agree that Bone Pool is a staple amenity of our community. I think it's an issue of budgeting, obviously. And I think that we should pursue any and all options to hunt down donors, to look for grants, to, you know, try to figure out how to save Bone Pool and revitalize it. I know that it's an old pool, so there's a lot of issues with that. But I do think it's a worthwhile expense to enhance our community, you know? That's where a lot of people learn to swim. It's where a lot of people and families go in the summer to stay active and, you know, stay out of trouble sometimes. So taking things like that away is not gonna make our community more attractive to people to stay or to come. And if it does have to close, then I would look into options for city subsidized memberships to other pools. That way, that option is not completely gone.
James Trow.
I saw somebody went to meeting, it was what, 2.5 to 5 million dollars, what they said to replace the pool, to the current size and current status. Yes, it's a money thing. One of the commissioners brought up downsizing it, doing a splash pad, change, doing something with the property there. I know the gentleman had done a lot of the work throughout the years on the pool. And, you know, it's, he's kept it going. But we gotta decide something. I think it's gonna be a money thing, but we do have to have something. I know there was talks that they were gonna talk to the schools about using the high schools, high school pool for some of the stuff if they could. And that's one of the risks I've seen them building. Wait for the next couple of meetings, maybe we'll find out, you know, more about what's gonna go on with it.
Okay, same question for Aaron Cheshire.
I think this is a great opportunity to utilize a neighborhood town hall, kind of figuring out where all of the residents stand with it. It's a very, very expensive thing. It's a 54-year-old pool. And trusting what our Parks and Health Director said, that that is about double what pools usually last for. And again, with what he said, is that pools are not very popular anymore. I grew up at this pool. I loved this pool. I was a swimmer for a very long time. And I think that the most important thing about having a pool in your neighborhood or in your town is the opportunity to show kids how to swim. Like it said before, using the high school, having some sort of collaboration with the high school for that. And paying for a membership for all city residents to have at LCS might be something that would be worth looking into. So the residents don't have to pay for it, but the city could have a contract. I think that would be worth looking into.
Thank you. We'll start with our next question with Doug Miller. Doug, how should the city provide and financially support a quality and inclusive recreation department for the city residents?
I grew up in a different time, I grew up in a much different time when I remember 47 young boys and girls lining up, all wanting to play baseball, and all 47 went on teams. It's a much different atmosphere now where children are going out on the road and doing travel sports, and the cost is getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Hundreds of dollars to have a ninth or 10th grade girl play softball. I'm not interested in seeing that. I'm interested in the city getting back to being an inclusive sports activity. It has to start somewhere, and I think the city of Adrian could do something very well to help all the girls and boys that want to play sports. And why would we ever want to have somebody not play a sport because they don't have any money? I hate it.
Chip Moore, same question.
I totally agree with Doug Miller because the city should promote outdoor activities for our children. It's good for the exercise, it's good for community health, mental health, to be active. And I don't think our kids today in our school systems get enough exercise. And I'm all for trying to figure out what we can do as a community for outdoor recreation.
All right, same question for Tiffany Silo Zai.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. How should the city provide and financially support a quality and inclusive recreation department for the city residents?
Well, first of all, I think for equality, I think we just need to make sure that the information for public and recreational activities is known to all of our members of the community. And I do think it's important that the city's involved because a lot of times, you know, outdoor recreation activities can be free. I mean, we can utilize our beautiful parks to have baseball games. We did that for the bicentennial. There was a lot of great people working on that. There was a baseball game that people gathered to watch and to play. And I just, I think that these are easy things to do to enhance our community. And having more activities for young people, young families, is never a bad thing. And I think the city should definitely be involved.
James Trow, same question, please.
Well, I personally didn't partake in sports when I was younger. But my nieces and nephews did. They took advantage of the stuff through the Y, they took advantage of the stuff through schools. I think, yeah, we do have to have something more for the community, more for the kids. You know, I've raised, what, six kids now, and we're on the last one. And I wish she would get off that, our computer, and actually get out and do stuff. You know, that's what they need. We need to get them out, you know? She's a pale little white girl. She just sits at home and plays her video games. I think that if she got out, did soccer, did softball, did something. And that's what, I think as a community, as a city, that's what we need to encourage is help finance, or if not help finance. You're a business owner, go to a business owner, seek to help sponsor.
All right, same question for Aaron Cheshire.
So I grew up here, and I played softball for 13 years. And most of that time was in city league sports. When I did that, I did not, I don't come from a family that has much money at all. And how that was taken care of was they had businesses sponsor all of the softball teams, all of the baseball teams. It was something that made me able to participate in recreational activities for, again, 13 years. Besides that, like it was also said, utilizing our parks, I've been running a park cleanup for the last, that will have lasted 10 weeks. And every time I go, if that park has a softball or a baseball field, it's such a beautiful place. Our Parks Department does a really, really nice job of keeping those baseball diamonds nice. So we should continuously keep an eye on that and keep funding that and pay for kids to play sports.
And same question for Gordon Gaus.
I completely agree with what Aaron said. I harken back to my childhood here in Adrian, and I can remember where every service club, whether it was Rotary or Kiwanis or the ALX club, every club supported a team. I played on the ALX, I played on the Rotary as I went up. I wasn't any good, but I, at least I was out there getting exercise. And I think that's one of the reasons that we need more outdoor activities. We need to get the kids away from the computers, away from the video games. That's why we have a problem with child obesity here. We know our kids are not getting the physical activity that's necessary, and sports helps keep them out of trouble. And I think we've got beautiful parks, we've got so many baseball diamonds, they just don't get utilized. They get maintained, as Aaron said, the parks are beautiful, but there's so much more to do. And I think we need to reach out to some of the service organizations and see if we can't get some of those ideas moving forward. Every one of them says they're here to support the youth. That's what we need to make them do.
We move on to our next question. We're going to be starting now with Chip Moore on this one. Chip, if elected, what actions will you initiate and or support to make the staff of the city of Adrian, especially at City Hall, more diverse and inclusive?
That question I find very offensive. I find it that we should hire based on their qualification and their character, not whether it's DEI. So I think the city manager should always go for the best individual who is qualified for the jobs that they're looking for.
Tiffany Silo Zai.
I'm the only woman sitting up here. I think it's extremely important to have equal representation because there's not only white men. only white men in our community. Um, and I think, um, I definitely think that it's important to have the people that are leading your community and making ordinances on your behalf have some of the same interests in mind, um, and who can see and empathize with you more directly than perhaps someone who's easily offended would.
Same question for you, James Trow.
I believe everybody needs to learn. And I haven't said at home, they're not gonna learn. If somebody's willing to apply for a job, you gotta teach them. I'm currently training somebody that's never pulled a set of doubles, but he's willing to try it. I don't care color, race, sex, whatever, whatever they classify themselves as. If they show up for the job, put them to work. That gets our unemployment now. It puts somebody in there. It makes it to where somebody will be willing to wanna go further in their life.
Same question for Aaron Cheshire. Aaron?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. If elected, what actions will you initiate and or support to make the staff of the city of Adrian, especially at City Hall, more diverse and inclusive?
Um, so, we've heard a lot that City Hall is not a very welcoming place. Um, and I think a lot of that has to do with the same kind of thing as city chambers. Uh, when I got involved with city government, um, I realized that nobody sitting up there represented me at all. Uh, as a proud member of the queer community, I was terrified to tell anybody up there what was happening to me as a queer resident in the city. Um, that same thing goes with City Hall. Um, there are a few very, very nice people that work at City Hall, but there are a few that make me, even as a candidate, not wanna go in, not wanna ask any questions. And when it comes to things like your utility bills or, um, you know, trash pickup questions, anything like that, you should be able to feel welcome and ask these questions by going into your City Hall. I would support anything, uh, to diversify that, to actually have all residents feel welcome by, um, somebody sitting in there that reflects what they look like also. Bilingual services need to be a must and need to happen immediately.
Thank you, Dale. Um, first of all, I would like to point out that seven people, of the seven people in the city commission, three are women, so don't think that, uh, it's just white males. Uh, but having, having said that, I think that the city, the city government needs to mirror our population. This is a very diverse city. Uh, I don't believe in quotas, I don't believe in labels. I believe in recruiting and having people of different perspectives bring to the table different ideas. I want qualified people, I want the best qualified people, but I think we can find those in our minority communities, in our female community, our male community. I wanna bring, I've always believed in my business, uh, experience, to surround myself with people who are smarter than I am and who bring a different perspective to it. So, um, I don't like the labels. I would, I, I worry more about exclusivity than inclusiveness. Um, I don't wanna see people excluded just because of their race, color, whatever.
Same question for Doug Miller. Doug?
I believe the city is trying very, very hard to be inclusive. We want to hire the best people and it doesn't matter anything about who they are, who they represent, where they're from, it's, are they interested in doing the job? Are they qualified to do their job? Let's hire them and give them a chance. Let's move them in. We have some really good supervisors in the city right now that, uh, really have the backbone of, uh, we mentioned, uh, the parks and other things that are really being handled quite well by, uh, some of the city employees. I wanna encourage them to continue to hire the best people, the most qualified, and I would never, ever put parameters or boundaries after working for 55 years in the theater business. I do not put boundaries up for anyone, ever. I think everyone is welcome.
All right. Thank you. We move on to our next question and Tiffany Zylor-Zike, we'll be starting with you on this one. What is your knowledge about the crime rate in the city of Adrian and how should the city work to reduce crime?
You know what? I'm gonna be completely honest with you. I am not that well versed in our crime rate. Um, I would definitely leave that up to our Adrianic Police Department, um, to advise on any issues regarding crime. I also know that our new city administrator, Chad Ball, has a background in police work. So I think that leaving that kind of thing in the hands of the experts is probably my best way to, uh, to contribute to that one. Um, and obviously I would inform myself further, um, if I was elected as your commissioner, but I don't wanna speak on something that I'm not that well versed in.
James Trow.
Crime rate? I live on the east side. Well, you know, we don't see police. I also brought it up to, uh, Emmerich, that, you know, my neighbors, all of us, we wanna see, you don't have to stop, you don't have to converse with us, just drive through our neighborhood. That's what we wanna see. Presence keeps the crime out. When they start rolling through the neighborhood two or three times within an hour, that stops the ones that are gonna cause problems. And if it doesn't stop them, it keeps them in their house so we don't see them. You get tired of, you know? You get tired of some of your neighbors and what they're doing. Stand up. You see it happen, voice your opinion. Call the police, report it. That's the only way you're gonna take care of the crime. Other than that, yes, you're right, the chief should take care of it. We're the first line of defense. We're the ones that have to stop, but we're the ones that have to get the rate down.
Aaron Cheshire, the same question.
Um, yeah, uh, like Tiffany, I am unsure of what our current numbers as far as our criminal activity goes. Um, but I think that through my, my Parks Initiative, um, there was a whole part about policing and how to have, um, more friendly interactions with police officers, kind of understand more what their job is, more, um, who they are and, uh, a more open-to-door policy with, uh, our police officers. One thing that was brought up is having bike cops, uh, having people, um, actually come through and just be biking, you know, they're patrolling, but they can stop and say hello, um, be in the neighborhoods more actively, just as a presence, as a welcoming, friendly presence, instead of in their giant SUVs. Um, I also, uh, think that, um, our new city administrator will, will have, uh, a good handle on things. That's one of the big, very big reasons that I backed him, uh, was that he and Chief Emmerich can, uh, can handle that as, as far as, um, our criminal rates.
Gordon Dallas, same question, please.
Um, the, uh, one of the issues that I have with our police department, and I love our, our police officers, I'm a big believer in community policing. I would like to see the, in a good, perfect world, we'd have cops walking the beat, meeting, talking to the community, talking to the community members, establishing trust between the community and the citizens and, and the officers. We do have a lot of crime, well, sorry, we have a lot of crime. We have much crime on the east side, as James mentioned. I think that, uh, people are reluctant to report the crime or, for lack of a better term, snitch because they don't trust the police. And I think if we're out there in the community, a police officer out there, get out of their cars, stop at the park, or where there's a group of people, um, gather, start talking to them. Find out who they are and really introduce themselves to the, to the community so that the trust is established, so when there's a problem, the people are willing to tell you who, where the problem is and who it is.
Same question for Doug Miller. Doug?
We develop a trust with our police. Whatever anyone might think about how we should tell the police to do their job, they're in the trenches and they're working very, very hard. There are things that we can do as a community to assist them. We can help them. I think also, as, uh, Gordon mentioned, getting to know our police, getting to know where, where they are and what they're doing. I think it's important for us to, to support them and, uh, and support the community. We, we take care of our neighborhoods. We need to do as much as we can to help our neighborhoods to be the best they can possibly be. If it means that we have to call the police, then we do that. I think it's important for us to support them. Uh, I think it's important that we also, as Aaron mentioned, there's a wonderful one-two punch between our new city administrator and our chief of police. They both are going to work in tandem to do some great things for us.
Same question for Chip Moore.
I'm looking forward to see where our new city administrator, um, will, will answer this question because, um, I haven't really studied this question because, um, it wasn't my forefront, but I do a lot of traveling around the world and I noticed in Europe and other cities, bigger cities in the United States, there's cameras everywhere. But I'm not sure, we wanna go down that road, we're going cameras down the streets in our parks, um, to make us feel safer, we give up liveries. Um, those are some of the things that I have, but, um, I know a few years ago, being in the insurance business, I had three cars that were stolen behind City Hall's parking lot in, within a three-month period. And, um, you know, so it doesn't make sense to have cameras in those parking lots.
All right. And with the timeframe that we have, we're gonna start with our closing remarks. And each candidate will have three minutes for closing remarks and we'll go in that physical order as we started. Aaron Cheshire, you're first.
So... There's been a lot of talk about, um, how we will lead if we get the position to do so, but I believe leadership isn't not a position, that it is simply an initiative. I'm seeking this position to further the initiatives that I've already been, that I've, I've already been doing. Uh, whether that's been Latino advocacy through the nonprofits I'm a part of, that whether that's been helping with Pride festivals, whether that's making sure that every single resident is heard and listened to. I'm here because I love the city. I don't like hearing candidates call it poop or lipstick on a pig. Um, I don't like hearing things, uh, residents being called undocumented whatevers. And I don't like, um, when people call, uh, DEI offensive, uh, to even bring up. Um, I believe that having representation on the commission for everybody is the most essential thing that Adrian can do right now. Um, again, after being a part of, uh, local politics for the past three years, I have established trust between the commissioners that are current, to be able to tell them the things that I'm worried about, living as a trans man or living as a gay man in the city. And it is rough to be able to talk to them about it. Um, thankfully, we do have a very helpful commission right now. Um, but that representation is something that we need. Knowing that we have people here that need bilingual services and that's, it's not been taken care of is astounding, especially when those people are part of hubs in our community. And, uh, I guess I'll just finish with, uh, I'm here because I want young people to understand that there is a place for us here. I want queer people to know that there is a place for us here. I want minority groups to know that there is a place for us here. And Adrian is that place. And I, uh, hope that you, um, can come out to vote on November 4th and vote for Aaron J. Cheshire for your, uh, next city question.
And three minutes for Gordon Dallas.
The one thing you come to prepare for is your, your closing statements, so that's the easy part of these, these candidate forums. Um, so first of all, I wanna thank the NAACP for their organization of this candidate forum. As I mentioned before, this is the fifth time that I've participated in one. It's always great. I wanna thank the Dominican Sisters for hosting it and for all they do for the community, both financially and more importantly, spiritually. They are our spiritual leaders in this city and I very much appreciate that. Uh, and then thank you for all of you who attended tonight. It's a reminder that we do have people who care, who want, are interested in our government, are interested in finding out more about the people who hopefully will be leading their city. Um, so, uh, again, I appreciate that. When I ran six years ago, uh, I promised that I would listen and work collaborative with the community to focus on results, not rhetoric. Together, I think we've made progress, but we have a whole lot more that we need to do. Um, providing support, uh, for improving our streets, improving public safety and strengthening our neighborhoods. Because there's still work to do, I'm running for reelection because I wanna continue that work. Most city residents, uh, want balance and common sense. You want leaders who will put people before politics and focus on practical solutions that move our city forward. That's exactly who I am and how I serve. My background in business and finance with the recent accounts, accounting and finance, and a 34-year career of business management have given me the experience to make responsible financial decisions and stretch every taxpayer dollar as far as it can possibly go. I take that responsibility seriously because I know that good physi- physical, fiscal management is the key to make everything else possible, from fixing ropes, revitalizing our neighborhoods. At the end of the day, the election isn't about ideology. It's about accountability, met teamwork, and results. I'm proud of what we've accomplished and I'm even more excited about what's ahead for our city. On November 4th, I respectfully ask for your vote so we can keep working together with balance, integrity, and a shared commitment to the city with all love.
Thank you for your remarks, Doug. Doug?
I moved here in 1970, so, on a farm in Bristol with not much money, but I knew to know it. I moved here 55 years ago. I've lived on the east side for 55 years. I started my school work at Siena. At the time, it was an all-girls school. I was part of 12 young men who came in, didn't know anything other than, uh, it's a great art school. My life changed because of the Dominican Sisters. My life is what it is because of the Dominican Sisters. Their input into my life has been so structurally important from the very beginning, has made such a difference in how I make my decisions. I, without going too far, Aaron and others are always welcome. I've worked for 55 years in theater. I work all over the world. I see everything and I still move to Adrian because I think I can help with this city. I'm not interested in being a politician, I'm interested in being a citizen who's helping. I think that we have open discussions, I wanna continue to be a part of that. I wanna be reelected so that I can help some more. I think that what I bring to the job is very, very important. Yeah, I've been in theater for 55 years, but the three things I do in my work, in my business, throughout the world, I handle three things. I handle finances, I handle personnel, and I handle schedules. If those three things can help me in the city, that's what I'm hoping to bring to this job and continue to do it for another four years. Really thank, thank you everyone for coming tonight. Thanks again for organizing this and thank you, Dominican Sisters. I love all of you.
Thank you for your remarks, now for Chip Moore. Chip?
I wanna thank the NAACP for organizing this event. I moved to Adrian in 1984, just coming out of Officer Base to course as a, I'm an AG officer, ROTC. I wanted to go active duty and spend, and spend five years in Europe, but my dad's partner, Bob Pickler, got cancer my senior year in, uh, college, so I went the reserve way. And I want, over the years, my kids went to Montessori program here and, uh, they did a fabulous job at their education, um, so I'm very grateful for the sisters that promoted that, um, school. And Adrian's been very good to me. Uh, I, like I said, I grew up in Hillsdale, a small town. I consider Adrian a metropolitan area. She doesn't miss the traffic in Chicago. So, um, I'm a Desert Storm vet, maybe some of you may not, um, know I'm a, I'm a veteran. Um, I'm wearing this hat today, um, because a couple of years ago, I was doing some gene algae on my family and I realized my grandmother was born in Cushing, Oklahoma, in 1902. Oklahoma didn't become state until 1907. She was born on Indian territory. So I'm wearing this hat in honor of my grandmother. And her dad had a hardware store and we have her on film when she was, um, she was being 95. And what was her first memories? In her first memories, she told the family that as a little girl, that she would sit in the deck, the ports of the, the hardware store and her dad was be bartering with the Indians. And, um, I wanna make Adrian a place for safe, a good place to work, uh, a good educational system for our students. Um, I guess, I think Adrian has a lot of attributes which, um, for quality of life issues, makes this city special. And if I'm able to lead it, I do... And if I'm able to lead it, I do have, I've met four presidents, had conversations with four presidents in the United States. I've worked in Washington DC as an intern in college. Helped for the next three years, I got good contacts in Washington DC. So if there's a problem, I'm one of the few one on this table that can hopefully get to the red tape.
Same question for Tiffany Zylor-Zike. Tiffany?
All right. Well, this has been fun. Thank you to the NAACP for organizing this, and for the Adrian Dominican Sisters for having us here. I appreciate that. And for Dale Gardner for moderating, I appreciate that. And also to all of you who showed up and showed that democracy is alive and well, and we all very much care about Adrian. And that's all that we're here for, right? It's because we care about Adrian. I have been in Adrian for most of my life, 25 years. I moved away for five to Grand Rapids, and I drove my husband back here because I love it. I have business here, I want to make sure that other people can start businesses here. I think that local business is so important, and making sure that it's easy for people to set up shop here is, you know, it's what builds character, it's what makes towns like ours special. So making sure that, you know, Adrian is a desirable place to come for both families and businesses, and to, you know, listen. That is, I'll circle it back to what I opened with, I am a phenomenal listener. I'm not great at public speaking, but I'm a phenomenal listener. And I think that that's part of what the commission could use more of, is listening to what the people they represent truly want and need. And I, I encourage you all to go out and vote, regardless of who you're voting for. I think that's monumentally important. And, you know, we'll see what happens on November 4th. So thank you all again. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
Same question for James Stroll. James?
Like everybody else, I'd like to thank everybody who's involved in setting it up. I think we need some change. Sorry? We need to have more youth. I'm understanding that. We need to understand a lot of our neighbors. So if you get out and actually walk, this is the only thing I ask everybody. I get out and walk three to five miles. I listen to a county commissioner talk about, oh, he grew up over on the east side, remembering the thumb and sound. That's a vacant building. It's an ice rink. You know, everybody around knows who owns it. I used to do environmental cleanup. If it was $10 million 10 years ago, I can guarantee you, you're looking at 50 to 100 million now, because every day it rains, that contamination gets lower in your home. That's stuff we need to work on. We need to work with our businesses. I've had people that I know that want to start small businesses, but hit roadblocks. I've listened to people coming in, wanting to do things, but they're roadblocks. I think it's time that we just thought we're about to start listening to everybody. I encourage everybody, go to the meetings, go to your ZBA, go to your planning, go to your city council meetings. I'm there, I've been there for three years. I don't get the position, guess where I'm going to be at? Every meeting. I hope everybody has wonderful evening. That's all I have to say.
And to the candidates for Adrian City Commission, we thank you so much for participating in the candidate forum, and thank you as well. Before we adjourn for the evening, and once again, I'd like to bring up Jeanette, and again, the president of the NAACP here in Littleway County. Jeanette?
Thank you all for coming out this evening, and thank the candidates for participating. It's very important for us to hear what they have to say. It's very important. Again, elections have consequences. Get out and vote. Local elections are big. These people determine who picks up your trash, what your streets look like, how your city smells, how your water, how the quality of your water. These people make those decisions, and it's very important that you get out and vote. So take what you have, take it back, fill out your absentee ballots, or show up on November 4th. Thank you.
Nice to have the NAACP for organizing this. Again, a big thank you to the Adrian Dominican Sisters for allowing us to have this every single time here, and it's been wonderful. They are great hosts. And again, thank to everyone who came, as well as listening and watching on Littleway TV. Every Sunday evening, I echo Jeanette's, don't forget to vote. All right? Thank you. All right.